Huge accomplishment in CM history has occurred recently. Civic Memorial High School has been recognized as an exemplary, exemplary school of excellence. This award places CMHS among the top performing high schools in the state, and this reflects our students' growth as well as our strong community. Next, as Noel's already talked about, the cross team had an amazing season and had an even better ending. The boys team finished ninth overall, which is the highest CM has ever placed, with Max Weber taking first place with a time of 1408, making schools history as the 2025 state champion. Something new and fun CM has been doing is Karaoke Fridays. Every Friday, the media club sets up a karaoke station in front of the lunchroom, and students go up and participate. I can say from experience that this has been a blast, and I love how much we all come together for it. As you have probably seen on all of Noel's pages, the NHS has been collecting non-perishable items for their food drive. CM is also collecting items as an entry fee for the purple and gold game on Wednesday, November 19th. Then, this upcoming Friday, NHS students will be taking a trip to the Hope Center to donate all the items raised, all the items they have raised. Our school puts on an exciting talent show every year called Cornucopia of Talent. There's also, there's so many talented people as well as some comical acts. This event always happens on the last day before Thanksgiving break, and always is a great way to start the holiday season. This month has definitely been one for the books, and I am excited to see what CM can do as we wrap up the semester. Thank you for your time, and I will see you all next month at December.
Trippie Middle School.
Hello, everyone. I hope you all are doing well. In the past thirty days, we've made great progress as a student council. Starting off with our most recent event, we intended a leadership workshop in Meadow Brook, I believe that's how you say it, I really have no idea, last Friday. It was a really great opportunity for us to bond as a student council, meet new people, and learn more about leadership. Moving back a bit further now, on November 11th, we held a Veterans Day assembly that I feel was a great success. We began with our national anthem performed by the seventh and eighth grade band, and then I introduced the assembly. After that, Mr. Midgley gave his speech, which was followed by a few stories and speeches from our local veterans. During the assembly, we also had a very good performance from the choir, who performed the different songs of the different branches. Going back a bit further now, we had our first school dance on November 7th. I was sadly not able to attend, as I was in the high school production of Puffs, which was very good, by the way. I know that's not my school shouting it out, but I heard some very great things about the dance. As I led the preparations, everyone seemed to be very enthusiastic about this event. As we finished, I could really see the dance coming together, and I was eager to see how much the rest of the students enjoyed it. Now, finally, looking a bit into the future, me and the other officers have discussed holding a workshop for the fifth graders to attend in the next few months, if the Meadow Brook principal approves the idea. I think it would be an excellent opportunity for them to dip their toes into student council and see if it's a good fit for them. Thank you.
Illinois School Card Report.
I'm moving so that you can all see the slides, and so I don't have to be on camera, which makes it even better. Girls, don't turn the camera. So, the Illinois School Report card comes out every year. This was released on Halloween this past year, and what it really is looking at is data from last school year, but the report is just released out every year. So, just a little bit about a district overview. So, just starting with our school designations, we had one exemplary school, which was the high school, and all four of our other buildings were under the commendable status, which is really exciting to see for our district. There's our evidence-based funding information there, so you can kind of get a financial picture of where we fall in the district. A little bit about student mobility. So, five percent of our students in the district move in and out, and a lot of them, sometimes within the same year, or sometimes they'll leave us this year, and we'll see them back in a couple of years. But there is a mobility rate, and every time a student changes schools, it takes about three years to get caught back up, which seems like a lot, but if you're jumping from one curriculum to the next and then back, you're getting a lot of gaps and holes through that. So, that mobility rate plays a really big piece in when you're looking at your student data. And then our average class sizes this year sit around 22, and that is all district data compared together. So, again, for our teachers, you can see we have 159 teachers in the district, which is up from last year. Forty-four percent of our teachers have a master's or higher, which is really exciting to see those teachers pushing themselves to the next level, but also is what allows us to have dual credit classes at the high school, is when you have that master's degree. On our teacher evaluations, 98% of our teachers are scoring in the proficient or excellent range, which again, just is another piece of data that shows how great the teachers in our district really are, and how much they care not only about their students, but about this district and their profession as a whole. And then we have three teachers that are nationally board certified, which is an extremely rigorous process to go through, and just elevates your teaching upon that as well. So, the elementary and middle schools are scored on these indicators. So, there's an ELA and a math proficiency. So, that's how many students reached the target of mastery that the state has set for their grade levels in ELA and math. Science proficiency, science proficiency, which is scored in, or the test is taken in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. So, again, it's that how many students have met or mastered the proficiency level at science. ELA and math growth then looks at, okay, while students may not have reached what the state deems as a meets or a proficient standard, they want to look at how the students are growing. And so, you would expect a student to have at least one year of growth in a school year, but the data that we receive actually breaks it down, and so we can see how much those students are growing in comparison to other students in their same bracket. So, it's not how much did they grow closer to proficiency, but it compares a student that started in that exact same spot as them last year, and then it looks at how they are in comparison to each other the following year. Chronic absenteeism is our number of students that miss 10%, which is 18 school days or more of the school year, and it doesn't matter if it's an excused, or an unexcused, or a mental health day. It's 18 days total. And so, that's why parents, you're getting all of those reminders, and phone calls, and text messages, and students were doing all of those different incentives and reminders and all of that, because it really is important, not only for your education, but our district is rated on that rating as well. And English learner progress is working with those English as a second language students within the district and watching their progress as they've come into the United States. And then the climate survey is the five essential survey, and this is really just based on a participation score. But the principals utilize that information a lot. I know when we did the school improvement plan presentations for you all, you saw the principals refer back to that five essential data. So, it is really valuable information that we utilize, that comes from the community, the staff, and the students as well. So, Bethalto East was a commendable school. So, in their schoolhouse, you can see that they were scored on ELA and math proficiency and growth, and then also chronic absenteeism. The reason those three boxes at the bottom, so the English as a second language, science proficiency, and the climate survey are not in the house is because Bethalto East doesn't get a score on that. They do not have 20 or more English as a second language students in their building. They do not take the science assessment, and their students don't take the climate survey. Students don't start taking the climate survey until fourth grade, and so they don't get a score for that one. Because those three pieces are not in the house, those percentages that I just showed you change. So, you can see that they take those three scores, which were each worth 5%, and they distribute that 15% to other categories. So, chronic absenteeism then takes on a much bigger weight in determining our score, just as ELA proficiency and math, and then the growth as well. So, the other thing that makes Bethalto East pretty unique is the scores that they receive on their report card is based on how our third graders last year scored. So, these are students that Bethalto East hasn't seen for at least two, or three, or four, right? Like, years. But it's because the federal government requires all schools to be scored, and there is no other test that's at the pre-K, K, and one level that is consistent across the state that all schools can be scored on. And so, that is why Bethalto East scores are the, is based on the third graders' scores the year before. They will tell you that the caveat is those scores, those students had to have attended Bethalto East. So, any students that moved in and did not attend Bethalto East, those scores come out of their calculation. But typically, you will see as we go through these Bethalto East and Parkside scores, will mirror each other quite a bit, except on absenteeism. That's the only one that Bethalto East truly has their own control over that situation. The percentages that are on there are again, just showing, you know, we know that ELA proficiency was worth 8.86%, and so the first number, the larger number that's in front of it, just shows how much of that percentage point that the school earned, and then they take all of those, and that's how they figure that overall score, to determine their score. So, just to kind of break it down a little bit again, this is Bethalto East. This is the only chronic absenteeism that they have control over, and so you can kind of see over the past couple of years, they've made substantial growth since the 22-23 school year. Last year was a little bit lower than the previous year, but again, if you remember back to last year, we had about a six-week stretch where everybody that you talked to was sick or had someone in their family that was sick, and that really took a hard hit on a lot of our schools. And then this is where Bethalto East does a lot, they mentioned in their school improvement plan, to work towards, you know, they do the all the eagles in the nest, and they get to have a party after they've reached so many days. So, they're doing a lot of things to help incentivize, to help raise that score back up. Okay. Parkside, so like I said, their scores are going to look very same. Same thing, they don't have those three indicators. They reached, or they again, scored in the commendable. Again, those indicators, that 15% was distributed out. So, this is their ELA, the blue is their proficiency, the purple is their growth. So, you can kind of see as it goes on, the proficiency scores, how close we were to earning all of the possible points in those areas. Growth then, again, was, we have some room to work on some growth, but those are already conversations that our guiding coalition teams are having about what does this look like, what can we do? And then also thinking about how can we use our eagle time? Because you'll see, when it goes to math, that our eagle time with proficiency, Parkside earned all of the possible points for proficiency this year, which means they met that state target for the number of students meeting that, and I think a lot of that is due to the fact of the eagle time that they have instituted and have started using in our focusing on math skills. So, we're going to apply that same concept to the ELA and hope that our hypothesis is going to work out the same when we look at the scores for next year. Again, you can see they have really done a great job with increasing their attendance as we've gone on, and so, again, they're doing a lot of incentives in the classrooms with attendance, talking about it, really getting that information out. That information goes out to the teachers. The teachers are reminding the parents all the time, so it really is a whole building effort to increase that score. Meadow Brook was commendable, but if you'll notice, they now also have the climate survey points and the science proficiency score, because they do, the fifth graders take the science tests. So, the only category they don't have is the English language learners in their building. So, they only had 5% then that had to get distributed amongst. So, their weight looks a little bit different than Bethalto East and Parkside's. But again, you can see here that they have consistently done a really nice job of hitting those proficiency targets over the last three years, and getting the students, that proficiency target changes every year, which means they're getting more and more students to reach that proficiency target. And then you can see with ELA growth, we still have, as Mr. Newell likes to say all the time when he and I have conversations about school report card, there's a lot of points left on the table. So, we know that that's an area that we're going to look at again. That comes back to our interventions, reteaching strategies, and how we do those things. So, then the story remains the same with our math, but you can see, again, they've made a great jump, a whole, almost a whole percentage point over last year in the math proficiency. But again, growth is an area that we're working on. With them departmentalized, they really started looking at how that breaks apart, and now they're working on interventions and how to get that going a little bit more to get that growth score up. Science proficiency, I will say, if you remember back when we did the school improvement plans, we talked about how the state right-sized scores this year, so meaning they took everything onto the same calendar. So, what a proficient in, on the IAR means the same thing as a proficient on the science assessment, and it means the same thing as a proficient on the ACT. Well, when they started right-sizing those scores, they realized that they had been scoring science much too easily. So, it is a lot more difficult to get a proficient on the science scores now, because they've changed the cut scores so dramatically. So, while yes, there is a drop, there is part of that has to do with the fact that that cut score jumped all of a sudden between the 23-24 and the 24-25 school year. And then again, their chronic absenteeism, that cold last year, or that virus, whatever it was that was going around, really took a hit out on Meadow Brook. But again, they're doing quite a bit to work on that. Trimpie was a commendable school, and again, they have all those same indicators that Meadow Brook has. So, again, they just had 5% that was distributed across those scores. And then again, it's the same story. You can see that for the past three years, they've been meeting that ELA proficiency rate, which is really great. And then on for ELA growth, kind of hovering around in that same area, but again, it shows we've got some room to work on. Those are conversations that have already started this year at the middle school level about interventions and utilizing everyone and every time that we have at school. Here's math. Again, I know we talked last year, or I'm sorry, at the last meeting with the school improvement plans about how math across the state is down. It took a massive hit during COVID, because ironically enough, kids weren't at home practicing math facts. And even though they, you think, oh, well, my kids weren't at home reading, they were reading the captions on the TV, or they were reading on their video games, or they were reading something, even though it might not have been educational stuff, they were reading, they weren't practicing their math facts unless you were taking them to the drive-thru and asking them to figure out the change for you. So, that's part of the issue. The other part of the issue too, I forgot to mention earlier with math, but I'm going to talk a lot more about in January when we do our data review, is when you look at these proficiency scores, the math test actually becomes more difficult every year. So, and what they say is average for a student is what is expected in third grade. By the time you get to eighth grade, you need to be amongst the 69th percentile of students to be able to just meet. So, I'm going to break that down a little bit more when I talk about the data quality review, because we have a different dataset that kind of helps explain that a little more. But math, it's known, but there's also research behind it to show that math is much more difficult for you to make proficiency and growth on. And then here's the science, again, it's that same story where, you know, we obviously have room to grow, but that drop is not as quite as shocking as it initially looks when you look at the numbers. And then here's our attendance as well, as you look at this. I just had a meeting with Trimpie today, and we were just talking about how they're currently already 3% better attendance now than they were this time last year. So, we're hoping that that trend hangs on and will help pick up in these areas. So, high school though, is judged on a different set of standards. And so, high school looks at that ELA and math proficiency as well as science, and that all comes from the ACT. Then it looks at your graduation rate, and that's your four, five, and six-year graduation rate. So, students that graduate on time, students that graduate one year late, and students that graduate two years late. That's worth half of the score at the high school, is your graduation rate. Ninth grade on track, so that's the students that were tracking Fs. So, again, parents of high schoolers, that's why you're getting constant messages from Mr. Newell and the teachers about where your students are with grades, but it is ninth grade on track, which correlates directly back to graduation rate, right? And so, that's why it's important to keep track of that from the very beginning. Chronic absenteeism, climate survey, and English language progression is on there as well. So, I don't know if you haven't heard the news, but the high school was exemplary this year. Mr. Newell offered to let me bring the trophy over. I was a little nervous, I didn't want to be the person in that video that like dropped the trophy and it shattered, and now I'll live on social media forever. If you ever are unsure about this, you just need to go check out Mr. Newell's wrist, because as you read- as you read in the paper, it really is tattooed on his body. So he will never forget this score. And he is proud to show it off as he and all the other teachers and staff in that building should be. It was a lot of hard work, a long time coming, but absolutely well-deserved from the students, the staff, and the parents for them. So like I said, so they have those same weight indicators, the only one that they don't have is the English language learners. They don't have twenty in their building. So you can kind of see then here as it goes along, that ELA and math proficiency. So they've continued to work really hard on pushing those students up towards it. You know, you heard Mr. Newell talk about how the teachers took the ACT to see what the questions were like and do that. They've modeled their CFAs after those as well. So again, all the things that they're doing is just, here's the data and the evidence to show in another way for you. Graduation rate, so again, earning all of the points that you need to do that. And then that ninth grade on track, right? Mr. Newell at the assembly talked about how he really thought last year's freshman class was going to do them in and the number of meetings he had, keeping them on track with their scores. But again, it, it helped, but this was an area, as soon as I sat down with the high school team this afternoon, they said, we got points on the table with ninth grade on track, so we're going to start adding this and this and this. And I was like, I, right, I love it. And as parents and a community, you should be thrilled to know that they're already, you know, continuing to push forward. They haven't stopped just because they reached that exemplary status. Science proficiency, again, you can see that kind of hit that science took with the right sizing of the scores. Chronic absenteeism, kind of hovering around in that same area. And then all of this is really just to think about, it's a continuous improvement of cycle, right? So you heard me say a couple of times, like I've been meeting with the teams already and we're talking about next year, the teams are utilizing their guiding coalitions to think about what can we do? The PLCs, which is why it's so valuable to have those Wednesday afternoons that teachers can get together, analyze the data, and start making a difference and making changes and tweaks so that we can continually keep pushing forward with, obviously, our ultimate goal is, you know, for me to be able to stand up here and say, we have five exemplary schools because we have five amazing schools in this district with really wonderful staff. And so to get that state recognition would be really exciting to have. There any questions?
Is there any discussion at the state level about looking at absenteeism differently moving forward, Alyssa?
So next year, they're actually, it will be the same, but instead of calling it chronic absenteeism, it will be called students in attendance. So instead of looking at who's not at school, they will be looking at who is at school. So again, it's that same, it'll be the same number. So instead of having a fifteen percent chronic absenteeism rate, you would have an eighty-five percent student in attendance rate. But yes, they're going to start flipping and looking at the positive of it. There are some other changes that are coming, or I'm sorry, that are being proposed on how to do this right now, like I talked about, that target, you heard Mr. Newell talk about on that October first, he and I were constantly hitting refresh, trying to wait for that score to come up. And it's because it's a constant moving target of what you're trying to reach. With this new proposed state accountability system, it is set targets. So at the end of the year, and once we get our preliminary state testing scores back, we will be able to sit down and graph it and we will know exactly where we're going to fall at that point. Like I said, which then gives us a chance to constantly monitor throughout the year that we're approaching those targets.
Was there any scuttlebutt at your meeting? I know at my meeting last week, there was discussion about math scores across the state of Illinois all went down. Did you hear anything at your meeting last week with people in your role that their districts were experiencing similar, that their growth in math had gone down?
So math in general, yes, there's constantly been kind of this conversation about math in general has kind of taken a hit. The state had put some things in place to help out after COVID. For three years, they kind of put like these intermittent tests that you could take to kind of help find out exactly where students were. The state decided that after three years, schools didn't need that anymore, so they cut that option off. But yes, that is a trend, not only across the state, but really across the country. And like I said, COVID took that initial hit. And then with our test in Illinois, it's an additional hit because it's not comparing apples to apples when you look at the rigor of the test. I think probably the greatest analogy that I heard was, it's like you're at a horse event and you see, you know, the horse jumps over the first one and they goes over one pole, and then the next one they go to, they're jumping over two, and then three, and then four. And it doesn't look at how many poles you had to jump over, it just looks at how did you do? And so that's kind of what has happened with the math test. Some have, I'm not going to say easy, because if you've ever proctored a math test, they're wordy and complicated, even at the third grade level where I, I mean, I've proctored a third grade math test a couple of times and I've thought, hold on, I would have to do this, and then this, and then this, right, to go through it? But yes, they're not taking into comparison, the difficulty of the test is getting harder and not just like you would think, oh, well, sure, eighth grade math should be harder than third grade math, right? It's not about the difficulty of the grade level standard, it's about the difficulty of the test itself. And like I said, I have more data that'll kind of explain that a little bit more in January.
As the kids transition from building to building, you guys use this data to know what you're looking for when those kids come, on how you can kind of enhance some of these areas of opportunity that they may have in the growth area?
Yes.
With the principals and that, to, to know like, okay, what am I looking for when this grade comes into my building? How do we need to work with those kids?
Yep, so we kind of do it in a couple of different ways. So one of the ways is our intervention teams that go from one, or like will meet with one building to the next, and they'll really talk about, okay, these are the students we've been working with at like tier two and tier three. Here's what we've been doing, here's what's worked successfully. So that's kind of been one way to help those students that are kind of struggling already. Another way that we really look at this data is all of this information, along with their scores, feed into a program we called, a program we used called EduClimer, which I knew nothing about until I came to this district last year, and I absolutely love the program. You can very quickly pull up a student and see all of their past historical data on how they've scored, how they've done as a group. And then yes, we, they have access to the test scores from the year before. So if you wanted to look at like the whole grade level report, you could take a look at that and get an idea of what's coming in. Anybody else?
Great job.
Thank you.
Now we can do administrative reports. Do you have anything else?
No, I've talked enough.
Chris?
So I submitted a report to the board, but I did want to highlight a couple of things that the board will be voting on tonight. One is the elevator project at CN. The project is currently in the hands of the architects because we'd like to use health life safety dollars for the majority of that project. The project altogether is going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not a complete tear-out, it's a renovation of the Otis elevator. Otis is proprietary, they don't let anybody else touch their stuff, and nobody else will touch their stuff. Otherwise, it leads to a lot of problems. So the elevator is working, but it's on borrowed time, so to speak, that parts aren't being manufactured for that model anymore, so the brakes, we could be in a real pickle. So this is more preemptive move. Fifty thousand dollars eventually hopefully will come from the Illinois State maintenance grant, so the dollars of that hundred thousand dollars will come to help life safety once the architects approve and it moves on to the state for approval. Tonight, when you're, when the board is voting, the eighty thousand dollars puts us in line so that we can reserve our time over the summer where there'll be minimal disruption to the kids at CN. And make sure that, you know, whatever space they need to renovate, they'll have, and it gives us a little bit more lead time for our guys to do electrical work and get ready for Otis in the summer. The second thing is the tentative levy. I've been working on this for the last month or so, since the tentative, excuse me, the tentative EAV came out. We are looking at a little levy of twelve percent, and that's to make sure that we capture all of the new EAV dollars that are projected to be out. Our current EAV is three hundred and twenty thousand, yeah, excuse me, three hundred and twenty million. The tentative EAV is also three hundred and twenty million dollars. However, that does not take into account the, I'm trying to find, I'm sorry, the multiplier that the state issues on our four different townships. So the average of our four townships multiplier is one point zero seven six seven five. So individually, Fort Russell's multiplier was one point zero six seven nine. Foster is one point zero four one nine. Moro is the highest at one point one one three six, and Wood River is one point zero eight three six. So you wonder what that means, what is the multiplier? That means that the state of Illinois has disagreed with our local assessors and said that they were undervaluing the property in our district and in those townships. So they said that they refupped their numbers and that's where the multiplier's imposed. Theoretically, they've all the property in the state about the same. I'm not so sure about that. But what we'll be doing tonight, what the board will be doing is voting on the tentative levy that's really getting the process started as far as being able to put the notice in the paper, be getting to type out the numbers on the final levy that will be going on in December. And then also, the truth and taxation hearing will be in December, which is a much more encompassing presentation, similar to a budget presentation, but not, it's a little bit more expensive, but really, we're, I think, our levy will come in, our EAV will grow by about nine percent. We've had growth the last five years, we had one year of down, decreased value, but then a bounce right, excuse me, bounce right back. So it could even be as high as nine point three, but I think by proposing twelve, we'll be able to, like I said earlier, capture all the new EAV that is in the community, in our district, in our townships, so we don't leave any dollars on the table, we can fund our programs. So in fact, really, our tax rates should drop just a little bit with the EAV rising, whether it's twelve or nine percent, the tax rate will continue to fall as the EAV grows, which is, I know that will lead to a little bit more on the tax bill, but it is a positive when your EAV grows, that means you live in a place where other people want to live. It means that you live in a place where people find it attractive to buy your home, which is what's driving up the EAV as, as well as the multiplier. So it is a positive to have growth in our EAV, which is not sure exactly how much. Any additional questions I can answer for the board?
A question about the Otis elevator, that was proprietary, we discussed this very brief earlier. It's proprietary information that came with the original contract with Otis?
It's proprietary in that only Otis can work on the elevator.
So it is what it is.
It won't go out for bid. Because it's proprietary, it's proprietary to Otis, so they're the only ones that will work on it. Like even if you called other companies, you tell them what type of elevator it is, and they're not interested in working on it. Is that fair, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Would you add anything to that?
We were doing a total tear-out in the new elevator.
Put it out for bid.
Different scenario.
I tried to do that through the one size group at the middle school, Otis at the high school. I tried to get this one that feel like you get a better bang for your buck in a pro country, you know. So we do a new elevator, we have one of the other, we will not, we're on others.
Understood, thank you.
Does that help?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, my things are a bit lighter than all of this. Next Tuesday is one of my favorite days of the year. We have Thanksgiving dinner at Salton University, our MGC program, and our EC class at the high school. We make the turkeys, and then they make all the sides. We have a big Thanksgiving dinner. We had, last year I think we had eighty-five people. I promised Megan Camp I won't invite anybody else, but I did invite her mother this morning at Legion World. So that is the last person I'm going to invite, but yes, she's always like Jen Weber, who all of you invited. But it's really a wonderful time, and we were able to send some leftovers home with some of our students, and really great. So we're, all right, this is my last. But it's our afterthought next Tuesday at eleven thirty, please come by, we have it in here, and it's just wonderful. They make decorations and you will not be disappointed for sure. And there is dessert as well, so. So that's wonderful. And then shout out to Angie, she included our Bethalto University and our EC high school is in the play. And I was at stake, so I missed it, so I was really disappointed not to see it, but they, talking about it, they were, they were so proud, so they could shout out to her. And then finally, shout out to our district psychologists and social workers, Missy, Missy Marshall, thank you, always did our adoptive family, and she rightly so has retired. So our district psychologists and social workers agreed to help continue that program, and we're going to try and make it really simple and easy, but without them, we would have had to not do it this year, and we just couldn't not do it. So a big shout out to them, and if you're interested in sponsoring a family, or if you know what family you need, let me know. So that is all.
Good evening. So just some things happening at Bethalto East. One, we just wrapped up our conference night, it was so great seeing all the families in the building and just hearing them talk about what an amazing year their kids are having and how much they feel their child is cared for and supported. That's always nice to hear. We are gearing up for our November school-wide celebration, which we will have a guest reader coming in, one of our teachers' dads, who's a retired superintendent. He's coming in and we're doing campfire stories and smores, so the kids are really pumped up about that right now. We'll transform the library into a little campsite for them. And then we have our winter concert, that'll be on December second at Civic Memorial. The kids have been working hard to prepare for that. And then I'm really looking forward to our winter fast bridge data, so we'll be taking that assessment at the beginning to the middle of December, right before we go out on break. And just by looking at the students who we have in our targeted tier one and tier two interventions and looking at their data and seeing how well they're doing, I'm really excited to see what we're going to have our entire school population doing and performing. And I think a lot of that is because of our new phonics program, UFLY, that we implemented. We're just seeing kids like at a different place at this time of the year. Our teachers who have taught kindergarten for, I don't know, thirty years, some of them, they're like, I can't believe our kids are already reading words, writing sentences, kindergartners in October, we're doing this. So we're really excited about that.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. At Parkside, we also have our winter math and ELA benchmark scheduled for when we get back from fall break starting on December first. We're supposed to have our next positive behavior assembly on Friday. Our kiddos do still have quite a few folded eggs to earn, so we'll see if I end up getting pied in the face on Friday or not. Might be okay if somehow they don't make this month. We are looking forward to fall break. We, during our parent-teacher conferences, did a food drive for Parkside families that were going to be in need over Thanksgiving break. Our family engagement and climate team kind of sponsored that. We have a lot of shelf-stable food that we're going to be able to give away to our own families, so we're really excited about that. Those families can come, either pick them up the Monday or Tuesday before break, or we also have people that have agreed to drop off food if they're unable to come to the school to come get it, so I'm really proud of that. We also had one of our third-grade teacher, their husband is giving away five turkeys, so families could put their little name in a drawing at parent-teacher conferences, so we're going to draw five names for that. So I just love that our school is coming together to help like our Parkside family specifically. I cannot believe that we're already talking about end of semester holiday parties. Uh, I cannot believe that we're already talking about under semester, holiday parties, second quarter A R parties. I just wanna shout out to my P T O for all of their help sponsoring all that, so our kiddos can have those parties. We're definitely looking forward to fall break. We had a very successful Bobos fundraiser. We fundraised about fourteen thousand dollars for Bobos, so we are very, very excited for that as well. And I think that's, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, echoing on probably a lot of what they said, we do have our benchmark meetings coming up in a couple of weeks. It's hard to believe December is like right around the corner. I look and I'm like, what happened to our first semester? But it's been great. Um, fall conferences were amazing. Big shout out to our teachers who prepared for those. It's great seeing the families in the building. We had book fair going on, so getting books in their hands. Also a big shout out to our nurse. If you don't know, we onboarded a new nurse. This is her third week and she has had rapid fire, let me tell you. Um, but she has done it with grace, calmness. She has been a breath of fresh air out of Meadowbrook. She reaches out for help. She is outstanding, so thank you for that. We got to celebrate fourth graders this last week. They hit ninety percent attendance, so we're really rocking that. So we had a special treat with them at lunch. Um, why not more sugar, you know, add to it? As we come off of Halloween, I said, do you guys still have some in your house? You know, going on. Um, I have to give, um, another shout out to Mr. Angelo. He's doing something really cool in his classrooms during lunch. He has a lunch bunch every Thursday and he has a speaker and students sign up on their own, so he's building leaders within our fourth graders right now. I think he's gonna have to expand his classroom. Um, I know Mr. Zimmer's been on that too, but, uh, Mr. Pierce was in there, David Pierce, our wrestling coach, so he took it as an avenue of, um, being a strong athlete too and how that leader rolls into the classroom. Our S R, new S R O is in there, um, giving some interesting stories and kids were asking him for a million questions to him, so they do that every Thursday, so if you ever wanna stop by, he opens, um, his classroom up to some students there. Um, I'm super proud of our staff, um, lunch cafeteria ladies, they are working hard. And you can see our Thanksgiving dinner is Thursday, so we are smelling turkey from one end of the hall to the others. Kids are like, why is there chicken cooking? Well, it's kind of like chicken. Um, and, uh, we did our chili cook-off on Friday with staff. Ann Patrick, I think she, uh, put some extra little slips in her drawing, but she got, um, the chili cook-off winner, but we are just rocking and rolling out there. We have our first band concert on December eighteenth, so if you want to hear some great beginning fifth grade band, come on out. Heard those clarinets squeaking away, some hot cross buns today. And our benchmarks are fifteenth and eighteenth, so like I said, we're just diving into that data and keep on rolling out there.
I know that, uh, William already spoke about our Veterans Day assembly, but one thing I did wanna add, this is our second year in a row doing this assembly and it's wonderful. And Dr. Smith was there and afterward she said, hey, just wanna share this, it's great, and I agreed with you, um, never seen a group so quiet and attentive. I mean, the kids took this very seriously, you know, there were serious moments in there and some laughter moments too when the veterans were talking about things, but they really did a great job. When you put five hundred and sixty middle school students in a gym, you never know what's going to happen. And normally our assemblies are fun and loud and things like that and you could hear a pin drop and everyone was very serious and attentive and they did a great job on the student side of watching that as well and learning a lot that day. Um, as Shelby mentioned, our band and choir holiday concert is coming up on December eighteenth. Christmas music is in the air. As a former music teacher, um, I know how stressful those evenings can be because you're preparing for one event and our music teachers have been working really hard and our students are sounding great. You will hear the choir students singing down the hallways. We have to remind them voice level two as they're singing, um, as they're walking down the hallway. And then as Shelby mentioned to you, still everything I was gonna talk about, that's okay. Um, our Thanksgiving dinner, uh, lunch is this Thursday and we always have a little friendly competition where, um, the administrators, um, help serve the Thanksgiving lunch and whichever line goes the fastest wins. So we get three opportunities, our sixth and eighth grade lunch, to see what side's going to win. So, um, I've been on the winning side quite a bit, so we'll see, um, you know, I'm just kidding. I know, just, it's just a joke. So we're really looking.
I already asked the cafeteria worker today who she wanted on her team.
Oh, so you're cheating.
I won't tell you what she said.
She probably said, not Gibson. They give me the easy things. I hand out the rolls and things like that, so.
Oh, you're a big friend.
Yes. So, um, and we're just, you know, oh, also the December eighteenth is the board meeting, so it looks like you won't be seeing some of us because we'll be attending a concert, so maybe you guys can get done early and hop on over, so. All right, thank you.
All right, good evening. All right, so we are kicking off No Skip November. We are in our second week, uh, trying to work on that attendance. Last week, if students met their goal, it was dress your counselor, so we went to the costume closet. You haven't checked out some pictures, there's some really, really good outfits there. This week, we have silly street a teacher at lunch event and then during the cornucopia of talent, we will have slime the admin. And then if we keep that attendance up, we are going to have our grand finale on December fifth, our SOAR assembly, where we will play the Beast games. If you don't know Mr. Beast, I recommend that you look it up. It's a good time. All high school kids know Mr. Beast, right? So, great stuff there. I would like to highlight the production of Puffs was amazing. I don't know a lot of Harry Potter, but trust me, it was super good. Uh, Friday night's crowd was unbelievable and Saturday had a great crowd as well, so it was a really, really good fall production. The kids did such a nice job. I would also like to highlight, uh, Dr. Smith mentioned ninth grade on track, so we are putting some programs in place for that. One is lunch study and this is designed for freshmen who fail to turn in assignment in one of their core classes. So you get one warning after that, you get a nice little lunch ticket. Hey, we have a lunch and learn session and, cause our motto is failure is not an option. We want our students to be successful and if they're gonna be successful, they have to turn in their homework. Mrs. Book, or some of you know her as Mrs. Marlin, has taken the lead on this. And in the last three weeks since the program, we have turned in an extra hundred and fifty missing homework assignments in our core classes, which we think will help in our math, our E L A and our civics classes. Additionally, this year, we're running more of a targeted after-school tutoring program. Students are welcome to go to after-school tutoring on their own. We have a certified math and English teacher there, but this year, we're doing it a little different. We actually even have an intake, so sometimes students are scared to go that first time to tutoring, so we'll have a teacher go introduce themselves, what to expect, what they're gonna work on. And so like I said, you can drop in, anybody can come, but we also make arrangements for our other students. Our ninth grade data, when we look at that freshman on track, if we compare our freshman failures this time last year to this time this year, we had a sixty-five percent reduction, so that is pretty amazing. So proud of my after-school tutoring, Mrs. Book, Mrs. Austin, Mrs. Smith for helping run that. Final exams are only nineteen days away. Can you believe it? Nineteen days away, so they are right around the corner, so we will be working to get our students ready for that. Um, that will be on Wednesday, December seventeenth, Thursday, December eighteenth, and Friday, December nineteenth. And if you happen to be absent those days, you get to spend some morning time with me on December twenty-second and December twenty-third for a little extended learning opportunity to finish those up, so we're ready for the start of the school year. So lots of good things going on at C M. Thank you for your time.
Are you gonna go with the directors at all or no?
Oh, Bill said he had nothing.
Oh, he, okay. Perfect. And Tyler's at Trumpy, so we're good? So it's just me? So I just wanna thank Dr. Smith, uh, for presenting the update on the school report card. Uh, we greatly appreciate your efforts and collaborating with each of the building leadership teams to analyze that data together. It's evident that we have areas to celebrate as a school district, but it's also evident that we have areas to improve across the school district. Um, we're committed to exploring effective strategies to enhance our student achievement and we will, as we move forward, we'll continue to remain focused on the goal of continuous improvement and that will hopefully translate to higher growth scores for all students across the district. Um, also wanna mention, Justin talked about Puffs. He went Friday. I was there Saturday after we welcomed the cross-country team home on the, um, coming down the Bethal-, uh, coming down, uh, back to the high school, ran back to the play. Angie, you guys did a fantastic job. I, um, I think I just felt very touched by the inclusivity that you guys had, uh, for the students this year with Bethalto University and our E C kids participating in that school play and what it meant to them, um, whether it's bowling, unified bowling, whether it's the play. I can't say enough about the opportunities that our special education students receive in the school district. Obviously, that's under your tutelage, but I just wanna say thank you because Puffs was fantastic and it warmed my heart to see all of the students up there participating 'cause all does mean all, so thank you for that. Um, I think this is obvious, but after you've seen all of this data, um, I wanna remind everyone that attendance at the high school, and I'm not taking anything away from you because trying to get high school and somewhat middle school students, convincing them to come to school is one thing, but at the K five level, that conversation shifts significantly because it's no longer about convincing kids, it's convincing parents. And if you saw some of those attendance numbers at those lower levels, um, Chrissy can do all she wants to do, but she's not gonna be able to entice a five or six-year-old to come to school if mom and dad don't drive them. And so I think that's obvious, but I just wanted to point it out because when you see those numbers at the lower levels, I know it's disheartening for me to see them, um, because that's not about the kids. That's a conversation about attendance with our parents and helping our parents understand how important school is. And so we're taking some of the strategies, um, at the high school that we're using, uh, with the, uh, text messages that we all get on Sunday nights or the, um, grade text messages or the emails or, you know, my own daughter gets them as well, and we're implementing those strategies at the lower levels and really trying to target parents and help parents understand why attendance is so important at especially, it's, it's important at every grade level, but at those foundational grade levels, when they're not coming to school or, and they're already in intervention and you compound that learning loss by they're not in their regular class, then they're not receiving their intervention. And I just wanted to, again, it's very obvious, but just point out, the conversation is very different when you're trying to convince high school kids to come to school versus trying to convince parents the importance of bringing their kids to school to us every single day. So, um, I'm really excited. That's why I asked Alyssa the question, to hear the change in the way that they're gonna look at attendance at the state level. And we're gonna focus on the kids that come versus the chronic absenteeism, uh, rate, which is what we're currently looking at, so I'm excited about that shift. Uh, appreciate Mr. Schamber giving an overview of that tentative tax levy, your very first one. Um, again, I know he said this, but I just wanna re- remind everyone that we're required to adopt a tentative tax levy, um, and put it on public display for twenty days prior to its official adoption at that December regular board meeting, which will be on the eighteenth. We'll put, um, we'll request approval tonight, place it on display, and then again, at the, at the eighteenth, we'll hold a truth and taxation hearing at the very beginning of the board meeting at six thirty. Chris, Mr. Schamber will do a more extensive presentation outlining all of the different funds, talking specifically about the levy within each of those funds. And then again, the board will vote and take formal action, uh, at that December eighteenth meeting. Uh, you already addressed the elevator. Just wanna, I put something out on Facebook. A lot of people don't realize that November fifteenth is, in the state of Illinois, it's Board Appreciation, um, Day, and so we just wanna take a moment and express our heartfelt appreciation, um, for the dedicated individuals who serve as volunteers. I put it on Facebook because I don't think people realize that you all don't get paid. Um, I think they think.
We don't.
No, you don't. I'm sorry. No payment. Some, you know, there are some boards, the Village Board gets a little stipend, it's not a lot, but they get something for their time and I think it's important to delineate that this is a board that serves, um, exclusively as a volunteer and you have committed a lot of time. I don't think people realize you're on committees, you're on lots of committees, you're on, you're negotiating with us, you come to board meetings. It's not just about board meetings, but there's so much that has to happen prior to coming to the board meetings to prepare yourselves for that. So just thank you for your unwavering dedication, the countless hours that you invest and, uh, your passion for enhancing our school district. Your service makes a meaningful difference and we're grateful for your leadership. Um, oh yes, thank you. Uh, Denise Ingram, our brand new elementary art teacher. Um, I asked her, I reached out to her, um, a couple of weeks ago and said, do you think you could have some little second and third grade cuties make cards for our board members in a, as a token appreciation? That's what these yellow envelopes are for you. Some of our little art students at the second, third grade level made cards for you and obviously we're providing a meal this evening too. And finally, um, I wrote this in our district newsletter last week and I just wanna reiterate what I shared. Um, as we get closer to the Thanksgiving holiday, I just wanna say how thankful I am for all of the amazing staff in the school district. I realize that this job is not what it was five years ago. As society has continued to change and evolve, these changes have manifested themselves into our classroom, on our buses and in our schools. And so your work, our work, is challenging and it leaves you going home some nights depleted and exhausted. And so we want, we want and hope that you take time for yourself, um, over the Thanksgiving holiday and we want you to recognize how grateful we truly are to each and every one of you for the work that you do serving students every single day. We couldn't do it without you. Each and every one of you plays a role and you play a part and it's very important. And so we just want you to know how grateful we are, how thankful we are and just appreciate the work that you do every single day. So that's all I have.
Okay. I will take any public comment on any action I have listed on the agenda. Okay. Um, I need to review and approve personnel actions. Certified leave of absence Valerie Anderson, kindergarten teacher, non-certified hires. Alexis Gillis, custodian of T M S, Faulty East Split. Anne Hussey, special ed paraprofessional, Parkside. Um, non-certified rescinded offer Melissa Williams, bus monitor, non-certified retirement. Joanna Runyon Piper, paraprofessional, C M H S. Non-certified termination Dayton Ripley, floating paraprofessional. Non-certified leave of absence Carlton Davis, special ed paraprofessional, Parkside. Non-certified resignations Susan Rich, special ed paraprofessional, Bethalto East. Erin Buffington, special ed paraprofessional, Centratus, M G C. Um, exempt hires Carlton Davis, permanent substitute, Parkside. Amy D. Bachman, permanent substitute, C M H S, science. Extracurricular hires Eric Young, boys head soccer coach, C M H S. Michaela Callahan, assistant musical director, C M H S. Caitlin Lorenz, winter guards coach, C M H S. Lori Reimback, assistant softball coach, C M H S. Um, extracurricular resignations Kristi Oaks, head volleyball coach, C M H S. Laura Rules, assistant soccer coach, C M H S. Daniel Carlson, eighth grade head football coach. Um, extracurricular volunteers Laura Rule, uh, girl soccer, C M H S. Daniel Carlson, eighth grade football coach. Mike Parmentier, football coach, C M H S. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Kirby.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Rothie, yes. Wolfel.
Yes.
Mizer.
Yes. Um, I need a motion to review and adopt the tax levy.
The tentative tax levy.
Tensive tax levy.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Kirby.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Rothie, yes. Wolfel.
Yes.
Mizer.
Yes. I need a motion to set a public hearing for twenty twenty-five truth and taxation, six thirty P M, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Kirby.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Rothie, yes. Wolfel.
Yes.
Mizer.
Yes. I need a motion to review and approve health, life, safety, fund projects, C M H S, elevator, eighty thousand dollars.
I'll motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Kirby.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.[1768.11]
Wolfel.
Yes.
Meiser.
Yes. Any discussion items? I'll take any public comment at all at this time.
We have a birthday up here.
We do.
We do.
Oh.
I won't tell you whose birthday it is. Happy birthday, Sharon.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay, um, we turn it out here.
Uh-uh. We'll go back into executive session.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna go back into the executive session.
But no action will be taken when we come back out, or, so you guys don't have to feel like you have to stay.